On or about the 1st of January, obviously, the crowd have called on the new chairman of the new Arc Association Board to request a lease in Edredham on the 2nd February. During that time, as explained, they're having a management board chaired by Mr. Ryan Toinette. And that the board have carried out a business risk assessment and as a result of that, they have decided not to re-see the building. They have agreed they would pay the £300, which during the month of January, that's a little hint at why that's that, which you may understand from them. So in fact, what was happened, they have in fact paid us £700 in total.
Sorry, Simon.
They have paid us in total already £700. So it was £100 a month council agreed they'd pay up until Christmas, which gave them access to the building only to allow builders to come in to see what work they would like to have done. They were to be paying £300 a month between January and the end of August to give them access only for work that council approved that could carry out internal structural operations. And then as from September, they would have taken up the full lease, which they did want in 99 years. And then more recently changed to 15 to 20 years. But now they've decided they don't want the building at all and they have returned the keys. That's a fact, they can't change that at all. That's their problem if they do that. The recommendation now is that council determines how new business plan should develop and the direction it could take. And I would suggest that that needs to come back to a future meeting.
Yeah, okay. Do any current operations at this stage? Martin?
Yes, I would like to say that I'm quite pleased that they've actually decided not to have it because I don't feel that the council handled the matter properly. We've jumped in and out as exempt and all sorts of things. We didn't advertise it through letting agents. We just had these people who have approached us for the last two to three years wanting it. And I think that this actually proves the meaning, if you don't do things properly, that this is what happens. And I would hope that when the business plan comes back, we will be putting it at the current market value, which was more than what these people have. It's in the office for Stephen Reid to this extent. And we actually get proper open market letting, not through word of mouth. Because this has been like, well, Michael's put a lot of effort into it and other people, but it's like two years' work totally wasted because it wasn't really done properly.
Stan, what I would like to say is there's no point in talking about what has and hasn't happened, which we'll be on that. However, what I would say is I do not support that statement that was being made. I think that the last two years and the communication with the ARC has been handled in a most professional way. And I think that a very good job and everything that needed to be done was done by Michael. A new board of trustees obviously got a totally different point of view and that's no fault of Michael or the council.
Thank you. Joyce?
I'm doing my own research. I disassociate myself with whatever Mr. Brooks has just said.
So you're going to be like, just not really, I'm going to go to market.
What I am about to say, I hope that I not be interrupted again. I think this should now just lie, just be quiet, take some time over it and let's have... If you look at this, it's all my fault, my fault, my fault, because Jasmine has left. It needs another group to look at it. I have done my bit. I hope you take it.
Yes, I make no offence to council at that time. That's why I'm going to point out.
I think in that regard, I would, we need to go on record to publicly thank Michael Hayley for that minute. Because Michael put in a lot of hours, a lot of effort and he showed extreme due diligence. So please, thank you, Michael. What would you recommend, Michael? How much explosives did you take?
I think we should defer it.
Yes.
And then next, we're going to have to form a working group. It would be fair, it's the next month where we bring it back and then look at a working group on the table. Okay. So proposal from the chair is deferred. Further reports, it's been sent by Martin. All those in favour? unanimous that the item is now, it'd be brought back in March with a new plan, a coming plan. An unfavoury plan, so. Item 14, it's the tree on Worsed recreational ground. This is just the tree that had been identified as being diseased or poorly, because it had been burnt. And also it's quite straightforward. The decision is there in front of you. So there's no comments or observations? Martin? Okay, so the note of the comments is proposed by Martin that the... Joyce?
This is in addition to what we've already agreed.
Yes.
Okay. I would agree that on the next agenda, the survey of course proposed were aggressive on the action call.
I would second your proposal.
I would second. No, well, I'm supportive, yes.
Right. So the proposal was, the decision is that the council approves the failure of the right answer. The council approves the expense of the £100 and the council decides to plant another tree to replace one that's coming out. So then proposed by Martin, seconded by Stan. All those in favour? That's unanimous. And by the sounds of it, Joyce is going to bring a paper to the next meeting.
That's what, in the past, you're on your own.
Oh, right. Okay. You might want to revise them just to make sure. Okay. Item 50 is the earmark reserves. Consider a report and make any decisions as appropriate. If I can hand this over to the financial working group.
We had intended putting a spreadsheet on the screen, but for reasons best known to the office, that topic won't suddenly run accept next day's spreadsheet. So what we have got is a straight share. The purpose of the paper is to bring to attention the fact that we have got adequate reserves. However, what we haven't done is to earmark, sums of money earmarked reserves, a sum of money just put aside for something which will or is likely to happen. In our case, we do have a lot of equipment which does have a finite life. One day will need replacing. If we do not have an earmark reserve which will pay for that when it does need doing, then some future council will inherit or could inherit a big black hole. So to ensure that we are moving forward, that we have got robust natural controls, we're suggesting that council needs to set aside sums of money under earmark reserves each year. So it's spread over the life of the equipment that will need eventually replacing. So when it does need replacing, the money is sitting there to pay for it. Okay? That fits in with internal audit suggestions. It also fits in with external audit when they look at earmark reserves or what it's for. Okay. What we've done now on the spreadsheet is, this is for illustrative purposes. And we have taken advice as far as we can as to the life of the equipment. And we've looked at the cost that we've been given, but it is for illustrative purposes. We're not saying it is absolutely precise. We're not saying that the equipment will only last that number of years. But it is good accounting practice to determine the life of something and put the money aside for it. It means it's ring fenced. It doesn't have to be spent on the, on the year 10. If the equipment lasts another five years, the money's sitting there and you just need to act it to it out for inflation.
All right.
So I say, before we get too much criticism, I would say that the figures we've put in there are for illustrative purposes. It is the council to determine, A, if they want to have earmark reserves, B, what areas they want to have them for, and C, the sums. Thank you.
So if we're going, anybody want to think they want to add to that before we look at the columns and change any of them if need be?
Can I just add a bit as a co-author? I mean, it's a part of a plan. We're trying to look at all the finances. Obviously, in recent months, our time has been spent on the budget, but it does tidy up the situation. It's a current practice. It can be cancelled, but we've got a lot of assets. I mean, if you look at the assets, I know it's bloated by land, but we've got like 1.8 million and it does need work. And these are, these are the, it's like a singing fund really.
Yeah.
If you don't do it, it can make the reserves look more healthy than they are. So, you know, as Council Haley said, we are passing on to future generations a much stronger position.
Okay. Martin, you want to add something?
No. I'm slightly puzzled by that. I appreciate you doing some work to sort something, but I'm puzzled from even the recommendation, what you're asking us to do, because we've heard the comments again this evening that we're plentiful. I've got an exact word which the council Haley said about reserves. I've asked twice now how much our reserves are and nobody can give me that answer. So I'm a bit puzzled why we're still at this stage. Are you asking us to, well, maybe you say this is just a rough figure, but when we did the budget, nobody would tell us how much reserves. I estimate that there's probably about 80,000. But when I suggested we use reserves, some of it got from the council leadership thing we're talking about later. And then another councillor said, I think we should just use 16,000. Well, I think before we start earmarking, we actually need to know what reserves we've got. I appreciate you put figures here as guys, but I don't know how many, how much our reserves are.
I'll allow Michael to come back and answer that because as one of the authors, it's one of the few exceptions, but I'll allow a councillor to speak to us. Thank you.
The reserves change from month to month. The reserves are all the money we currently hold and we spend. That is our total sum of our reserves and that will change on an almost daily basis. Because money will come in, money will go out of reserve is what is left. The earmark reserve is, it's an accounting term earmark reserve, but effectively it means a sum of money which is set aside for a particular purpose, which doesn't have to be spent at any particular time. And in fact, it doesn't have to actually be spent at all. I know that sounds like a counter, but it's the accounting term. Where would it come from?
If we don't know, we don't know exactly what money we've got left over. That's what I mean by what money have we got left over to actually earmark.
The car can tell us what, how much money we've got left.
Peter?
Well, I mean.
Because we had a budget.
Listen, it's off Peters.
We've got the accounts for the end of January and total cash and bank balance is turning 30,000. But we've now got to live another couple of months and there are bills in the pipeline. So I would estimate it's around about 200, but that is inclusive of the 62,000 pounds, which is, if you remember, we sort of ring fenced. So the figure is reasonable, but when you look at the potential outlay in the future and in the last two years, of course, as Council Brooks has said, we have taken a bit of money out of reserves to keep the preset at a reasonable level. I think at the end of the year, probably, you know, we haven't done that. It might be a bit better than we thought, but, you know, it does move around. So we're not absolutely certain.
Okay. That's one of the things.
Yes, it's, to me, it sounds a sound and common sense thing to do.
Well, you're preparing for the worst, aren't you?
Yes. My only question is to arrive at the figure of 18,905. Personally, I'd like to see it round in about 90,000 or 10,000.
Well, that depends on what goes in each column. Maybe. Well, maybe what we could do is we could probably look at each of these lines. Everybody else want to add anything in there? I know everyone's spoken now, they want to speak. Maybe we can look at each of these lines and maybe with a steer from the finance working group.
Sorry.
Yeah, go on, Joyce. Sorry.
It just says at the end, recommendation. And that's all we're doing, recommending?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, whether anyone wants to...
We're just going round and round in circles. I think it's a brilliant idea. If you haven't got a sync fund, where are you going to get the money from? I mean, I budget a terrible in my housekeeping with a sync fund. For goodness sake, stop going around the houses.
Well, shall we look at, I might, I might let you speak again. I just want to say, does anybody want to challenge any of the figures that are in the final column where it says annual ELI issue?
I'm a bit puzzled. I'm not against the idea or whatever. My thing is we've just done a budget for next year. We don't know what we're going to have left over this year, but we should know because we have a budget. So I just want some confidence that that figure, it can be earmarked. That's all I'm asking.
Yes, it can. I mean, there's enough, there's so much money in these reserves that we have. But what we're doing, as we were saying, we've got reserves, but we're within the earmark zone. So when we come to the end of this year, earmark reserves will carry forward to make sure that we keep putting in the pot, to ensure that if something breaks, we can repair it in the future. But to repair it, £30,000, yes, if we had to replace the whole scape park at £32,000, we could do it because we have reserves. We would take the whole of that, let's say, that budget. So by building each budget up over a number of years until it reaches its, its top, then we, yeah. So let's just go through these lists. So.
Do you need to go with this one?
Yes, go on, shoot.
The finance working part, consistent group, have made it quite clear what the situation is. And financially, it can be, we're going round and round in circles. I suggest we move on and I propose we accept it.
Did you want to, did you want to change any of these people or should we need a financial working group to come back with predictive figures?
So I do have one concern and that's the figures of the Christmas decorations. Because when it says they'll last 10 years, half of them are dead in less than the three years of when we purchased them. So I believe it's just an observation. I just wonder where these figures came from. They're all the way around in 2010.
Okay. Right, listen up. Right, what it is, at the moment, there is no need, at the moment, based on this spreadsheet you have in front of you, the earmark reserve would be 18,905. If nobody wants to challenge any of that and we're happy to leave it as it is, then we're looking for a proposal. And this recommendation that we use an earmark reserve policy, so proposed by Stan, seconded by Martin. All those in favour? You know, I mean, we need a computer after all. Yeah, you do. Right, let's start talking between the seven of us and you councillors. Item 16 is the contracts. Right, this, now, I know that we'd said that we wanted the clerks to go out to contract a certain thing, but of course, the council may have a different opinion. And obviously, this list that's come round is everything. But there are certain ones which we definitely need to be considering. So for instance, the servicing of the hand dryers, for instance, which is annual to February, so it comes up, let's say, in 2017. The recommendation could be that we go out to tender or do we just extend it because it's such a small amount of money? Any comments on this report?
I'm trying to find the page where we need to go through them individually. The first comment I want to make is that certainly contracts were asked, your son had to go out to tender and you got confirmation from the office at the budget meeting that they were going to do it very soon. So I find it extraordinary would be an ask question whether we want to do that now. Are you going to go through one each with a bit of...
Well, I'm also going to be trying to do it one then.
The second comment is one I'm still standing on the hand dryer one. That did actually come through council when Richard was here. And I think the opinion was that we were paying a lot of money for nothing on that. And we could have used a local company to just inspect. And even there was a talk at one point of actually replacing because of their age. Because the certain things don't often work properly. So that that needs to be reviewed, whether we, I would suggest, I can't say, but suggest that that needs to be reviewed, whether we remaze, but I think we did stop paying. I mean, well, the thing is, if we've got to look, something has still happened to see whether they're, if they are still serviceable. Because we pay money each year, but then they still often don't work properly.
This is the ones in Church Street Toilet, if anyone's right.
Because they're very well used.
Right, can you handle the fire? One moment, please, because you're certainly confusing me. Right, if I was to look at this whole sheet, and because the house has been presented, I guess I'm going to have to go through each one to satisfy my own mind. And so the clerks are going to have to help me.
Oh, yes, I can see you jumped up something and it's actually downwards, the first one.
Do you want to come here? Look, have a check. Come on, have a, let me check you.
No, I'm just apologising. I'm just apologising.
Line one is downward photocopy service company. Is that...
We've just asked.
That's...
Five years.
So forget, right, thank you. So forget downwards. The next one down is PHS Limited. It's contracted to 2019?
Yeah.
So we can ignore that. Wrong roll. Walgate Service Hand Dryers. Now, that's annual to February 2017. Do the council want to extend it or do they want to go and look to see if they can get it cheaper elsewhere? That's the question.
It's the one that was referred to.
Yes, yes.
The only question that I have is, are they Walgate hand dryers? So if they're not servicing them, they may take them away. So we wouldn't have to purchase new hand dryers as well.
They belong to us.
They belong to, yeah, they actually, yeah, they belong to Rutherford County Council, actually.
Right, okay.
No, no, if we cancel it, they're not going to remove them. Like, if it was like, for instance, some other toilet services, like towels, you know, the pork towels and stuff like that, they would take them away. Michael?
Yeah, just taking the step, one step at a time. If are we looking, when we go to tender, we're going to the cheapest or are we looking for best value? If we're looking for best value, do we have a criteria to determine best value? Because if we don't, I suggest that's step number one.
I wasn't looking for cheapest. What I was suggesting was that if we pay all this money and quite often they're not actually working.
All right.
That might be the chance.
Well, in actual fact, it was Trace and Carl that suggested that some kind of appropriate temping process be brought to the council in six months. And it was that everything is reviewed every six months and there's some kind of a red, amber, green system used. And they've got off the ground with it, Alison. So no, we don't have a strict tendering policy, Michael, I'm afraid. The question is, is that if we decide that we're going to go out to tender, then maybe then that one is drawn up by the clerk and the assistant clerk and we have to rely on their expertise bringing back to council. The main thing is if we don't do something, we're not going to get home from bed. So service hand dryers, the simple question is, do people want it to go out to tender or are they happy to spend £850 per year? Tender, so.
We'll have the clerk's advice.
Clerk's advice on this, will you go on? Can you guys?
We can do it. Take your time.
Let's, obviously, because February is the end of tax, we're going to have to be paying on a monthly basis ongoing anyway. So in the meantime, I think that we should be looking at a tendering process on the hand drying. Okay? So that, and so unless, unless anybody really challenges the chair, we'll vote on all these at the end. But at the moment, the Walgate one is going to be going out to tender. Office computer maintenance, is this with Millennium? Right, Alison wants to add something here because it's to do, everything to do with Millennium. Alison, shoot.
I've started looking at the problem, which I actually know for this year. So I think we just, it's a place that'll continue. But we bring, well, I believe, back to the council.
So everyone that's Mark Millennium, which is the next four items, definitely, is that the assistant clerk is looking at an alternative service provider. Are the council happy with that?
Yeah.
So in essence, she is already looking at a tender option, Martin?
But then in the world, shouldn't we be going out to tender? Because actually, my mind, I'm not discrediting you.
It's not quite the part really of things like this. We've already had, it's, you can't go out to tender with BT or TalkTalk. It would be up to me or the clerk to go out and bring the figures.
Or get quotation.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Without the Millennium out of it.
Well, no, it's just that, do, because maybe the phone and internet and all these things were there.
So yeah, so basically, they're not going to do it. They're going to bring it back to council and then we'll decide.
But we are, are asked to quote because.
Yes, they will be asked. They will ask them.
And they put alongside Millennium to quote.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to establish. Thank you.
Right, 101 web, is it?
That's, that is part of the Millennium, that's the Millennium.
So do we, we...
I can check through.
Can you check with that one as well and just make sure? So we'll leave the 101 web under the Millennium umbrella as well. Planscape is up until 2018, so we do not need to consider that one. We, at some point in early 2018, probably in the April time, the spring, that should be good counsel that we don't tend to that, I think, if we continue with it.
We're asked, we're going to be tending that, well, this is getting a bit late. We're all broken and blue.
Well, we've got, well, we've got...
We should be tending about nine months.
We've got 12 months. So at the end of the day.
But you were talking about doing it in 2018.
Well, that's right. Did I say to September of this year?
I'm looking at this year.
It was, wasn't it? You said April, I said April. Right, okay. So basically, the clerk will make sure that the Planscape one comes back to this council where we get the option to tender well in advance. Shoot.
But then have the contract, they will provide in the floor to space in 2018.
That's what, yes, that's why, that's why we said, so it would actually be September 2018 that we would be looking at it. They're providing this, they're pro...
They're providing, yeah, the floor to space for this year and now provides the floor to space for stay set before May of next of 2018.
So we need to tender in 2018.
Correct. So let's, can we not spend five minutes on any items we don't have to discuss? So let's, now they're walking this place, is that with the Planscape one? So we can dispute our walking displays. Annual insurance is on a three-year contract, yes? Which is insured, that finished, that's...
It's one year. Yes, one year, sort of, yes. Your review letter, the run down, well, Christmas time next year.
Reviewing the autumn Christmas.
Autumn Christmas.
Autumn, right.
20...
70.
70.
Generation.
Yes.
For this, yeah, back into this, constant effect from Mars.
Stan, can I just say that when these need to be reviewed, can we have a list actually written down? So that you can't know where it is. I don't have to look back at minutes and things like that.
Yes, we've all discussed that and Alison came with the idea of putting it on the wall, didn't you, on a spreadsheet?
I think it starts in March.
Okay.
Can I say great minds?
Yeah, indeed. You can do. Eon Electricity, minutes advanced and close. This is annually ongoing. I mean, it's pennies, isn't it? It's about £30, £40 a year. So we always leave that as ongoing personally. That's a very often challenges me. Martin?
Yes, we did actually mention that at council because there were lots of different things and lots of films. And somebody did say on Sunday before that they were going to try and get one company to do all of it.
Okay. So at the moment, we've got that down as Eon and yet the toilets, the electricity and the Christmas lights are now for Seven Electric. So maybe the clerks want to look at having this under one service provider.
It's a lot of ability.
Yeah. So we'll link, so that as a service, as a utilities thing, they're not going to be a million miles apart. Although Eon is a quite a duty to that. So in fact, can we, the clerks be given the responsibility of trying to get out of our electricity on the one service provider? Only advise the council if it's exceptionally large amount, of course, if it's huge, you can increase that cost. That's our reason for whatever. Seven Trent Water, that's a statutory provider, so we don't need to discuss that. Coi Environmental, the contract expires in, when is it?
March.
It's expired, isn't it? Right, so that is, that's going to go out to tender. So that will be going out to tender. Have everyone heard of that? AA Cleaning, that expires in March. No, disregard. It says here, renew.
Contract expires March.
When does the contract expire as well? It literally expires March, doesn't it? This year. So do we go out to tender or do we extend it? Right, okay. And Sally, I said yes, so. It's not invisible. Bitney Poets Ranking Machine is going to be discontinued, so you can forget about that one. Now, Wickstead Player Equipment, we have an annual contract. Now, the master.
That's also the, that's also the job, yeah.
Second one.
Two-year contract, zero interest.
Right, there is a, I had, I, one of the things, I had approached by a local provider who does, who does playground inspections, and they would be interested in tendering if the council chose to go out to tender.
Is the equipment Wicksteed equipment?
It is, but it makes no difference. Actually, not all of it, some of it's not.
Some, um, some. Scottish company.
Yeah.
Um, I've actually seen some of the reports, and although they haven't been discussed, or as they should, but, um, but that may change. And they're very, very good at how they're presented.
How they expect them.
And, and then also it helps Alison, because it gives specifics, so I wouldn't say that they should be got real, because it seems quite cheap, but I think to be fair, if somebody is interested in tendering, because they've had it so long, that perhaps we should give them the opportunity.
So do we say, you say that, did anybody else want to, somebody else to submit another price?
I'm not sure there'd be much of it, but in order of fairness, I think we should tender, as we've had it for a long time.
Okay, well, all right, we'll, we'll see if this other person, excuse me, submits a paper.
But I'm happy with Wicksteed.
Okay, um, we'll see, well, if, I mean, the only, the thing is, there's not many playground equipment inspectors, I know of Wicksteed, this sort of person's made themselves known. I'll ask them if they want to submit quotations based on, I'll probably get in contact with Alison, all right? And then you can compare the two, and bring it back as a report next, um, yeah? Uh, light, Christmas lights, that is contracted to two thousand eighteen, so we will be looking at really going out to, so they'll be doing it this year, two thousand seventeen, but we will need somebody for two thousand and eighteen, so we will need to be going out for tender, bless you, at the back end of this year at the latest, so that one can be deferred for now. Um, Opus Electricity, Princess Avenue, well, obviously, so that will, the, the electricity one comes with the remit of what we said about trying to get it all onto one provider. Annual water is a statutory requirement, and seven-trent is, um, also, so the proposal is that we go out to tender on, um, well, Wicksteed Leisure, we'll get the guy to contact us, A A Cleaning is a definitive tender, please. Coyle Environment is a definitive tender, please. We've noted the bits about trying to find the wrong service provider for electricity, um, and also we note the point that, um, Alison is going to try and resolve the Millennium thing and give us a more round package, and we're going to do Walgate as a definitive tender as well, I believe, yeah? That's the proposal from, uh, Martin, you proposing that?
Yeah.
Proposed by Martin, seconded by Richard, all those in favour? You know us, thank you very much. Um, contracts, let's receive from Barrett and the council, consider a letter received and make any decisions. Any, any comment or observations, Martin?
Yes, I, my, my interest is in conservation about town, and I have, obviously, a patient contacted the conservation officer, and I'm very surprised that the, um, current one is only employed one day a week, um, so I, I was hoping, I don't, I don't think it's actually, I'm no expert on it, but from what I've seen in the past, I don't think it's actually a full-time job, but I think the, the council could actually just support it, and maybe running council, council will review it, and, um, the job seems to be slightly larger part-time job, in my opinion.
Okay, anybody else got any, Martin believes that we should, um, support Barrett and suggest them to R C C, see that they review, that it should be more than one day, so people, come on, thank you. I will just excuse myself for the refreshment.
Yes, I mentioned this, uh, uh, this was raised at the parish council forum, and there's a letter gone around, I mean, what it basically is, is, um, about a budget cut. In my days on the council, there was a lady who worked full-time, um, yes, very, very efficient, um, then a fellow took over, and it was sort of half-time, i- it's now cut back further, it's another shared service, as we know, um, the legal teams disappeared and various other, um, I think it's inevitable, but I think maybe we could say, make some comment that, um, you know, i- it, we support it as long as we're not, uh, losing, losing out, um, so.
Yeah, so, so we, yeah, so we agree with budget cuts, but, um, I mean, they're even charging now, aren't they, as well?
Hmm.
Uh, stop, oh, yeah, stop.
You know, my, my concern is that I don't think one day's enough, I think, um, one of the, one of the issues where the conservation officer most often is used, is in planning applications, quite frequent, um, and, uh, one, one day a week, I don't think it's enough, I, I really don't. Um, if we have to support it, we do so, but I think, I, I would like us to at least say that we did reconsider that it is not enough to fulfill the, the, the working process of.
Okay, so, so, so a comment is that, are the Oakham Town Council, um, share a similar view as, uh, Barrett and that, uh, is one day enough? Yeah? Okay, so any other comments, uh, before?
I've got one on the table.
Okay, no, Tony, yeah.
I, I, I would support what's been said, actually, I, I think one day does seem, uh, belongs to anyone, as far as that's concerned, but we should, we should say that to the.
Okay, okay, Martin, I don't know your opinion now, uh, Joyce.
One day is not putting your heart somewhere into on our listed buildings. Even down to the grade two listed buildings that we have at the top end of town, our signal box. Uh, I agree with, uh, Peter, uh, because we lived through an excellent, uh, conservation officer, who I have to say, I am better Peterborough Cathedral, which is a garden now, uh, there are too many listed buildings just in Oakham, if you look at them, uh, to, to warrant to cut it to one day a week, it's, it's really.
Is it one day a week, or one day, come on?
One day a week.
One day a week. Oh, okay, um, okay.
It's ridiculous, I agree, it's got, uh, the, the finances have not been worked out, as we have got tight mouth belts on lots of things. And one day a week for a whole town.
Got it, well, I thought, did you want to add anything on this?
I'm like, I, I would abstain, but I don't have enough knowledge, um, to, to.
Um, so what, so what message does the town council want, I always want to say that we, we appear to support Barrett and parish council, and feel that one day a week is, um, maybe insufficient. Um, um. Okay, well, I say maybe, because maybe Oakham Town Council should be requesting, uh, the amount of applications that the office reviews.
I think.
What is it worth?
There's a lot, where you live across.
Oh, that one, how many is a lot?
They couldn't even change a door knob in there without. So it must be had a defect on the people that are restoring.
But do you not think there would be proof to our, just again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of applications for listed buildings? Council, tell me what you want to write to the, to the R C C. Did, did you want to know what the workload is of the conservation officer?
I think we can work it out from the planning act, because it's a listed building.
So, so want to write to R C C and say that we basically support Barrett, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, echo, echo their concerns and serious reservations given to the amount of, uh, great listed buildings in counties of London, okay, so have we, have we captured that somewhere, Alison? Okay, um, so that's the, who's going to propose that, Stanley? That's okay. Stanley, yes. Proposed by Stan, I don't, I don't, my job, you. I do want to argue that, um. Proposed by Stan, seconded by Martin, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, to your hand, six, project, six, all those against? And two abstentions. Let's receive from Rother, uh, item, item eighteen, item eighteen, let's receive from Rotherham County Council, any comments or responses to make to R C C relating to consultation with the any considerations on this matter? Anybody here?
Before I, before I'm attached, I will say, I'm personally going to look at this link myself, and because I think it's one of those things that you've got to look at, because from my knowledge of homelessness in this county, when people have actually even slept on Rotherham County Council's doorstep, um, the, their policy is appalling, it's sent off to last, you know, it's not good.
Okay, they, they're asking funny, um, please, could you send any comments to James Faircliff by Wednesday, twenty second of February? So, I mean, this is a consultation on draft housing and homelessness strategy, but, uh, R C C have got one, uh, which I'm pleased to see, I mean, I think they're doing their utmost, given their restrained resources.
Yes.
Um, I was going to hear the other comments, I mean, we would need to send something back to at least acknowledge it and credit, and, um, I think that comment in this case would echo the fact that we know your letter and, um, and note everything that's been said.
We will, we will, so watch put to calendar.
Yes, yes, yeah, we, we will, uh, watch with interest as it's put to calendar, yes, so that letter before, so that's all of, so we will send those comments in, that's a proposal from, uh, Peter, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? That's, you know. Thank you. Um, right, what's next?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, right, right, this is a let's receive from Oakham Town Partnership to consider report, make any decisions as appropriate. Um, this also has a. Questions you want to make, no, Martin first, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I don't want to make a long one, because obviously, there's been lots of conversations around about it, but my view is that this never came to council, um, at any point, so we're not legally obliged to pay it, and no disrespect to Mr Lowe about the other comments that he's asking us to consider, I think it's an inappropriate time to be considering those other items, and I would support personally that we don't, um, pay this invoice, and we return it, because there's no minutes to say that we approved it, we've never approved the appointment of the town centre manager, and in fact, the town centre manager has never been introduced to us.
Okay, um.
So that's it, that's all I wanted to say.
So you, you want to reject me with this?
Yeah, I'd just like to defer your other points, because I think it clouds the serious issue of the invoice.
Really, okay.
But because also that you've spent, you've spent time on the remainder, on the past, so there is really no, no event.
I haven't spent anything, please.
Well, no, you've reserved it.
Peter.
Um, well, really briefly, on one time on council, we've never, to my knowledge, really discussed this, we've been aware of the funds, so I think we should respond and just say that we cannot pay this invoice, because it's not something that's crossed our path, and, um, yeah, if there's any further evidence, uh, we'd be pleased to say it, but, you know.
Okay, yeah, anybody else want to comment, stop, well, it's a comment, it's, it's something which, in a way, I think doesn't concern, but, Mr Farley.
Let's go. It's done, baby.
I received through the post, remember, written?
Yeah.
And it's, um, Hawkesbury contract dated the twenty fifth of October, two thousand and sixteen. I have got no idea, I've got no idea who sent that to me, okay? It's not come from this council, from the town council. Well, there, there, it's, it's.
Is that on the back as well?
Yes, yes, yes. And, and I've never seen it before, can I have a look at that back page, mate, please? It was the same thing, but somebody sent it to me.
It's all of it.
And, look, look, all night long, we listen to your voice. It's beautiful.
Um, no, okay, I was just curious about the, um.
And that's for the first time, it clearly states in this box, yeah?
Yeah, okay, got it.
It clearly states, and mentions the word appointment and cost of the town centre manager, but it's the first time I've seen it written, that statement about the town.
I was reading on the town centre partnership, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, that partnership, the way that you're watching, why don't we do it together?
I'm quite happy to do it together, yeah.
Uh, right, okay, so, sorry, it was close, guys.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
On this bit of paper, on that page, it is usual, I have a little bit of this sort of thing. Which is all that, uh, it's usual, it's, as far as just scribbling something down like that, if also alongside it, is type the name of the person that scribbled that, and scribbled that. I am not prepared to acknowledge this at all, as a, as a public document, and that we should sign it, and all this, this is disgraceful.
And I'm prepared, what Michael has to say, and Michael.
No, you spoke for further, that's a question after that, well, Joyce is just great, because the official critical information link on Rotherham County's website has all that information redacted, so I wonder how the town partnership actually got this, with those names redacted.
Yeah, that's what I want to know, right. We're not here to discuss that, boys, we're here to discuss this paper, not interested, who said what to whom, and which character was in the process, Michael.
We need to go back to the, to the self, to the, to the. I would remind you, like, at the previous December meeting, we had a paper for the name, eventually, as our, like, got to the bottom, we got to six to half thousand pounds for, and the paper in fact summarized exactly what Larkfleet said the money was for, and just to remind you, it says, means, Oakham and Uppinham Town Centre facilities, it means facilities and services provided in Oakham Town Centre and Uppinham Town Centre to encourage and facilitate the use of those town centres by occupiers of development, including, but not limited to, the appointment and cost of the town centre manager, or similar post or contracted services as determined by the county council. Mr Paul Philipson is a person, the officer I dealt with all the way through on this, has made clear to me both verbally at the meeting, and he's confirmed it in the email, which can, uh, uh, earlier, so we can dig out again, where he has said, as far as R C C is concerned, we can do what we want with the money, um, that, that is a slight variance with, with that, but that was his interpretation of it, um. I don't know, we don't know why Oakham Town Partnership feel that they, it's their money, but that's, I've no idea, that's, that's not our concern, um, but we don't feel that we should be paying the invoice, that they do not have a claim on it, it's, but it's up to us, the council, to decide how much money we give them, because according to this, we should be giving them something, even though R C C's interpretation, that is slightly different.
All right, I'll take, I'll take one more comment on it, because this is such, uh, a, uh, an interesting subject, yeah? Uh, I'm going to allow Michael back, uh, make an exception, Mike, but don't.
No, I wonder, because I would like to make a proposal as well, based on what was said, but, but I think the reason the town partnership are doing it is because members of this council.
Don't speculate, don't mention.
I'm not speculating, have attended meetings, Mr Lowe, I can mention your name, you said that you're in there, so, but the point is, I would make, I've never been to a meeting, so.
You've got my name, yours.
No, I'm not been to a town, but I would declare that now, I've never been to an Oakham Town Partnership, where that's discussed, I went to one meeting where they said they didn't want me, um, because
Okay, right, let's, let's.
My proposal is, if I'm allowed to put a proposal, is that because the council did not authorize the appointment, did not authorize the appointment of the town centre manager, has no record of approving this payment, that we don't pay it, this evening, and we return it unpaid with that, with that resolution, you might want to word it a bit better than how I say it, but.
Okay, Che, can I ask a question, should you do that, please? Um. Should, should we been advised, should we have been advised about the town centre manager? Is the partnership wrong in what they did to appoint the town centre manager?
No, 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 the town centre, the town, the town partnership were perfectly within their rights to appoint the town centre manager, they have not done anything wrong.
Should we have been invited to?
Um, we, 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 there was no obligation upon Oakham Town Partnership to invite us to be involved, unfortunately, though, the minutes I've read is that they've repeatedly said that they would involve Oakham Town Council, okay? So, but that's by the by, because those minutes are not part of the public record at the moment, who knows, there may be in the future. Um, so, I'm going to take this from the top, first one here, it says Oakham. So I'm going to take this from the top, first one here, it says Oakham Town Council's invoice is rejected, so the proposal is, the Oakham Town Partnership's invoice is rejected, and the, Mr McLaughlin, is instructed to write to Oakham Town Partnership to this effect with suitable explanation reflecting the above observations. Okay, so that's the first one, do we reject the invoice? It's proposed from the, who wants to propose that? Proposed by Michael, seconded by, oh, you propose it's rejected? All right, all right, so Martin proposes rejected, Michael's going to second it in that case, are you happy second that he's rejected? And all those in favour that the invoice is rejected? That's geniuses. Now then, it also goes on to say in here that Oakham Town Council, in discussion with Oakham Town Partnership, identifies a specific event that would benefit the residents of Oakham Oakham, this event is agreed by RCC and all the other parties.
At the moment, I would like to propose that we don't do that, I'm not saying we should.
You wanted to defer this, didn't you?
Yeah, defer, I don't say we should break ties with them, but considering what's happened, I don't think welcome organisations negotiate with that at this present time, things have to change.
So Martin's proposed that we, that we defer, and how about when till?
Well, whenever the council thinks it's suitable.
So, so we defer any further decisions?
Yes, because we're going to have at some point where the finance people are going to bring that money to council for us to decide what to do, so that's when we decide who we're going to call.
Okay, I've got it, I've got it. Martin has proposed that we defer any further discussions or whatever, until the finance working group, you know, to council, and Peter?
I'll just suggest or amend that, I support that, because I do think it will kind of the current position, but I'm not sure about a specific event, you know, I would like to see something more tangible, so maybe.
Well, there's a third option on it, about getting the task in finish group to look at it.
Well, yeah, but that is dispersing the remaining funds, so after the specific event, so that, that would fall, really. You know, in finance, we've looked at it a little bit, but it's not, not an ad position to say how the funds should be dispersed, but, you know, I do think we need to give a bit of thought on this, because the whole thing's become a big issue.
I would, I can, I would make it, we would say we defer that, and then if possible, we can defer a set in out of a group, because I, I feel that we shouldn't be given priority, but I would like some group of the council to actually sit down and bring a proper report to council, and, you know, there are lots of under-organisations we could invite for them, but it just needs to be managed properly.
Now, that's fine, what we do is, because of the hour, I would say that Martin's proposal is that this item is, any further decision is deferred, and it's brought back in March, where we then look at forming a working group or have, give it a bit more thought, because we can't do it in, in what time we have, they have been in a, in, so the proposal is that it's deferred, comes back in March on the agenda, have you heard that, Martin? Seconded for that, by Peter Ryan, all those in favour? You know us, well done. We're up to the item twenty, which is an exempt item, now then, during an exempt item, what happens here is the town council may resolve to exclude present public, and if we do that, then we will unfortunately have to ask you to leave, but we'll see how we go. So we're coming up for an exempt item on twenty, this may be for twenty-one, twenty-two, so to resolve to exclude the present public under section one of the public body's admissions to meetings out nineteen sixty, as amended, during consideration of item twenty-one on the agenda as it concerns contractual conflict matters, that's the, and also what would be item number nine, which we've, which we've cast, which is the, say, comment taken. So that's what we're, Martin, you want to?
And later, ask the council to consider this, and then that's the decision, it's not exempt, because it does say just for the consideration, so when we make the decision, then the vote, that that is not exempt, because I've already been told by Rotherham County councillor that if we do exempt it, it's going to come out in parish forum anyway.
Is it? So, you know. Can we just sit that line?
I'm not willing to. You're probably not, you're probably not to did names, but you probably know.
Yeah, well, it was in the.
Don't say names.
Bob or Pete.
Yes, but no, that's, that's what makes it look, you can't hide what we decide at the night.
Does anybody want to propose that we exempt item twenty-one?
With the exclusion of the, of the decision.
Right, there's a proposal on the table, that the item is exempt with no amendments, yeah?
I just made a proposal to the council, and we just remind us first.
Well, in actual, well, what is, no, in actual liquidance, so you've made a proposal that it's exempt.
I haven't mentioned that it's the word in there, because it's supposed to be discussed, and that we don't exempt the decision.
Does anybody want to second Martin's proposal?
Because we need to tell the government what we decided.
Right, that's, I'm sorry, Martin, but that proposal has fallen, we can actually admit it at Oakham, please. So councillor Hayley made a proposal that the item is exempt in its entirety, proposed by Michael Hayley, seconded by Stan.
Is that just twenty-one on there as well?
Just twenty, I'm just going to do twenty-one. Just twenty-one, yeah, so that's proposed by Michael, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favour, one against. And, that's it, that's the moment, isn't it? There's seven people that have voted in. Yeah, there's eight people in the room, seven people put their hands up in favour, and one didn't, that means it's one against.
Is that you?
Yes, it is me. Okay, so that, so on the phone, we've now, no, I'm checking. Thanks very much for attending, so you want to say something quickly?